Ipswich Public Schools aspires to empower all students to be global citizens who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. I propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice, and demonstrating competency.
All right, announcements and special acknowledgements. The school committee will be presiding the Ipswich Public Schools Finance Committee on March 11th and 12th. The next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be Thursday, March 20th, here in the ensemble room at 7:00 PM. Communication Subcommittee will meet remotely Thursday, March 13th at 5:00. Elementary School Building Project Working Group will meet Tuesday, March 18th at 5:15. And Policies Subcommittee will meet remotely Tuesday, March 18th at 7:00. Any other announcements or special acknowledgements?
Yes, I have Ipswich Education Foundation recognized Ipswich High School senior Charlie Quimby for his 100-plus hours of service through volunteer organizations in 2024. And Charlie received a bronze pin to wear, graduation, and a certificate.
Congratulations.
Clear as we find the time.
It's awesome.
I have one too. I just want to shout out the Joy on Fries for last week's meeting. We discussed the pipe that burst on Linebrook, and so they had to have the last-minute cancellation of the bingo night where families had ordered pizzas in advance. They went around and delivered pizzas to families in the area, including my family when I was here last week. So they really went above and beyond to try to sort out something that was like kind of a last-minute disaster.
Yes.
Yeah, so big shout out for that. And it's been rescheduled, so it'll still be a fun community event at a later date, yeah.
Anything else? All right. Next, public comments. First, for information on our public comment at school committee meetings, our policy is available on the district website. It's B-E-D-H. All right, "Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It's an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. While the committee and/or administrators will not typically respond during public comment, the chair, as presiding officer of the meeting, may choose to if she seems it expeditious. Further, should the chair believe that an issue falls outside the purview of the school committee, she may request that citizens direct it to the appropriate person or body so that the matter is given proper, excuse me, consideration." Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, a total of 15 minutes overall. I'll use a timer if needed. This will be the only opportunity during this meeting for members of the public to comment. And should you comment, please state your name and street. You can come right there, say your name and street, and I'll give you a...
This is like very much more, I thought a lot of people came, so I feel...
Oh, good. You're welcome.
Alice Rouse, 21, Turkey Shore. I had written about my concern of eliminating the world language program in elementary schools. Thank you for the really kind response back. I think probably a lot of people feel the same way. It's been really beneficial to our kids. I know my daughter, who's a first grader, who's like a little bit lacking confidence at the beginning of the year. She loved that she learned everything through song and that she was learning something that she thought was kind of like a trick. Like she thought she had like a superpower. She's like, "I can say things in different languages." And I just, I think, I was surprised to see it being cut without more, I guess, attention from the school district. And just, I was surprised that it wasn't, more people weren't upset about it, or I guess a lot of people didn't even know it was happening. So I guess, I hope there's some way that there could be a plan moving forward to incorporate world language into the elementary kids' curriculum. And I know a lot of other people have had great experiences. The teacher just seems so lovely. Like, she's just, she's been doing an incredible job, and I just would hate to see our kids lose that opportunity. So I hope that's taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen Dillon, Spring Street. I also have a child who's in kindergarten at Winthrop and did also want to express my concerns for cutting the world language teacher. I really think it is very important for kids to have that cultural awareness. And then also, just, you know, speaking Spanish or another world language is such a life skill that I feel that we should be kind of incorporating that at a young age when kids', you know, brains are most vulnerable. And like Alice said, my son comes home really excited to tell me about all the things he's learning, all the songs, you know, that he can count to 10 in Spanish and things like that. So I think it's, like Alice said, building his confidence, and I also think it's just a great life skill to have as well. So really concerned if we're cutting that. So I don't know if there's a plan for it, or if you can even respond to this comment, but I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, we voiced our concerns. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anything preventing, or I don't know if it is happening, is the principal or the department at the elementary schools writing a paying grant for the position, or trying to find other grant-funded opportunities for the position?
That had been...
Okay.
Suggested.
Okay.
So I'm hopeful those discussions are happening, perhaps at the school council level.
Okay.
Any other public comments? All right, Subcommittee Working Group and Liaison Reports. Budget, we're going to hear from, because budget met on Monday, so hold on that. IEF met?
IEF met on Monday.
Okay.
And they are, they're still sort of in the throes of trying to fundraise and trying to find, you know, what, I think one of the questions that came up in that meeting, which I think is an important question, is sort of where does IEF fit within the grander scheme of pain and TWIG, you know? So as they're fundraising, they're getting a lot of questions around, well, why isn't, you know, paying grant doing this? So, and unfortunately, I didn't have great answers for them, because I've sort of, you know, no one likes to hear the answer, "Well, we're working on it," you know? But it is, in fact, true that we're working on the policy right now and trying to articulate what that pain policy should look like going forward, particularly, you know, in the decades to come as it gets larger and larger. But, so I think IEF is in a good place, per se, but at the same time, they're trying to figure out where they fit within the grander scheme of things. And they're getting some questions from people who I think are interested in contributing but don't quite know how all of it works, so. But nevertheless, they'd still do yeoman's work, and they're giving awesome people awesome awards, so.
Well, it's good that you're on that committee since you are also...
I know.
...our FEF's group to...
Yeah, it's just sort of be able to bridge, if I can even give them anything to work with, but, you know.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
Do they have their own, like, internal policy around, I would imagine, right? Like how they're approving grants requests that come to them?
Yeah, so they have basically different sort of, you know, I can't remember what they call them. And that's not buckets, but there's, you know, there's athletics, there's strings, there's, you know, and then there's general as well. And people can contribute directly to one of those or to the general fund itself. But they don't, they're not quite as stringent, I guess, in the sense that, of the way sort of the paying grant committee has to kind of look at it from a very narrow perspective of, you know, the language. So they do have some flexibility on that, which I think makes them invaluable in some ways, because then they can find a spot for, you know, that maybe it didn't quite meet the requirements for TWIG or pain, but, you know, IEF can slide in, which they did, actually, with the Yellowstone. They were the ones who funded Yellowstone in the end, or a big portion of Yellowstone.
But they get a lot of requests that are, like, where people are making requests to multiple, like they might, a request for a grant might go partially, a partial request to IEF and a partial to pain, or some, right?
Right.
Where both will, are willing to cover the same portions of the same, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Our kind of one-time strategic planning working group met, but I know that the full group met yesterday. I'm going to hold that till, I know Kate's on her way. So let's, it's all right with you, Charlie. We'll jump to high school student rep, and then we'll go back to that one. Kate?
All right, great.
I'm sorry, there's other Subcommittee. Do you want to finish that?
Oh, there are.
I was going to say for pain, Kate's not here, but I can provide a quick update. So the paying grant committee was not Subcommittee here, but like the FEF's group was supposed to meet this week. We had to reschedule. That meeting has been rescheduled for Monday, where they'll be talking about some of the initial things that the Subcommittee has worked on, like the new rubric, open meeting laws, like those kinds of things. So that's a sort of pre-meeting ahead of, once all the grants come in, they'll be ready to rock, I think, positioned a little better this year slightly to...
Great.
Yeah.
Another one, what's happened between last week and this week?
Elementary Building Project Working Group met.
Did you, was that previous?
No, we didn't include her last week because we cut the Subcommittee reports.
Oh, we did.
A long couple of weeks here.
Okay, apologies.
We met and we talked in general about communications. Again, as a reminder, nothing starts with the MSBA until July, but we thought there was an opportunity for us to bridge that and continue to share information with the town. We talked about several documents that we will bring to our meeting at the end of the month for you all to see. The first is just sort of a broad communication plan that outlines key milestones that everyone should be aware of over the course of the coming years, really just taken right from the MSBA. But I don't think there's a great understanding of what that is, so we want to make sure we're sharing that as often as we possibly can. The second is talking points. So what are kind of key messages that we have discussed that we want to make sure that we are sharing out across the boards and just across the town in general? The third one is FAQs. The distinction between the two is FAQs might be, would certainly be broader, but things that have come up that we may not be focused on, but to address questions from the community, but, so that we all have it and we're prepared with it, but also to make it available more broadly. All of this would go into the fourth item, which is the website updates, or now I'm on my fifth. So the website updates, so publishing all of this information on the update, so it's available. And the last one that has just sort of come up in a couple of different places, both through communications and here, is that we don't have the best forums for a true dialogue, even with the comments tonight, because of the structure of these public meetings and the policies and procedures that we need to follow. There isn't a great opportunity for an exchange. We've talked about things of, can we set up shop outside Zoomies for an hour on Saturday mornings or things like that? A couple other have come, a couple other suggestions have come up where there truly is something more office hours style, but an opportunity for a full conversation with people that have questions about budget or elementary school building or just field trips, the host of things that we're doing. And so how do we better position ourselves to do that, to engage with the public on whatever those are, whether it's to learn more information or to make sure they get heard, but not just sharing it and walking away, that we can actually have the full conversation. So we'll bring some of that up in our communications meeting...
Eighteenth.
Next week, yeah.
Oh, sorry, communications.
I think, I think both, and there's the important elementary building part of it. How do we make sure we're prepared for that? But it is broader, and that's a standing topic for communications, so I think we'll talk about it in both places. Our general recommendation is, it's probably, it would be good and it's timely to put something like that in place.
What?
Yeah. Yep.
Else I skipped, sorry, Charlie.
You're good.
Holding on you, Kate, so, but I'll start with recapping the meeting that Kate, Sasha, and I attended with Carl Nylund on Tuesday, to kind of really understand what that group is asking of the school committee. And our takeaways were that the budget's kind of in line with what we were thinking of doing anyways, the budget Subcommittee meeting sooner versus later, to try to fine-tune the year that we may ask for the next override and an estimate on the amount, so we can give that feedback to the Strategic Planning Committee, and then for the Elementary School Building Project Working Group to also take another look at the number and the year for that input. So that was what happened on Tuesday. And then, Kate, you then went to your meeting.
Yep. Sorry, hi. Sorry I'm late. Yes, so then last night, the Strategic Planning Committee met, and we reviewed, as always, the investment list that we've looked at at tri-board before, and also five different scenarios that Jim Engel had sort of pulled together for us to review with sort of different, different projects from the investment list, and we reviewed those scenarios. So the Strategic Planning Committee has received feedback from both the Finance Committee and the Select Board about sort of that survey that went out after the tri-board with the tax limits, asking our feedback on sort of what we feel, what the boards feel, an appropriate limit on both year-to-year tax impact is for the town, as well as sort of total tax impact over the next 10 years. So the Select Board and Finance Committee have provided those numbers, and I gave them the feedback that the school committee felt like we weren't comfortable with that. So they are looking, they're still sort of pushing for us for that information. So when we were looking at those scenarios, it was helpful to see what projects could sort of fit based on different limits. So like if we, if, if the boards agreed to like, you know, $700 a year is the max, the boards are comfortable going up year-to-year in taxes, what sort of projects could fit in that over the next 10 years? So it was, it was an interesting exercise. And we also spent a lot of time talking about the report that we're going to try to pull together for, hopefully for town meeting. It should go in the town meeting Finance Committee booklet, but that report would be for the boards as well as for the wider community. And we sort of tossed around what would be included in that report, and we, we came around to not having the Strategic Planning Committee recommend, you know, these are the projects I think we should do, but we really sort of rallied around that, let's give some financial thresholds that the boards could try to sort of manage the town within, you know? So say it's, again, whatever number sort of year-to-year, as well as total tax impact over 10 years. So it seems like that's what we're going to do, and maybe the Strategic Planning Committee will give some scenarios, like if we used this threshold, we could do these projects, or these projects. So that's sort of what we rallied around. So it sounds like that's what they're going to sort of give as the bulk of the report. So what that means for us is because they're going to use those thresholds, they really feel like the school committee needs to participate. Because what if the other boards give a threshold of $400 a year, and we can't do any overrides, we can't do any projects, we can't do our thing? So they, they think because like Strategic Plan has so many school projects on it, that they really feel like the school committee, they're going to use those thresholds whether we give them feedback or not. All that to say, I will be circulating a document to everybody on this committee that is, it's a PDF of these five different sort of scenarios that they put together, which aren't, which are just example scenarios. They're not, again, they're not like recommended scenarios, but they're just sort of some examples of projects put together, as well as it includes sort of the thresholds that the different boards so far have given them. So I will circulate that PDF next meeting, which is in two weeks, I think. I'll sort of walk you through it, and we can have a discussion with the aim of coming up with some feedback for the Strategic Plan on those numbers.
That ask feels a lot easier for me to understand and digest, like kind of having, instead of just a number, like knowing what number gets us what.
Yeah, exactly.
But also with us fine-tuning the numbers, it would, it would be helpful to have those numbers to the Strategic Planning Committee, so if we have any shift in our inputs, we know it's covered, yeah.
Right. And so the timing is a little, so like the Elementary Building Project will get, will give us those numbers, the Budget Committee will give us, you know, hopefully some sort of override guidance. When I say "we," I mean Strategic Planning Committee. And then, yeah, if that changes any of the numbers, I'll have that information, and hopefully be able to pull a report together by sort of beginning to mid-April, to be able to get it in the Finance Committee book. I feel like we started spinning our wheels for a while, and all of a sudden it's like, we'll be done next month.
The document you circulated earlier in the week that had scenarios in it as well, and...
Is that it? Did I circulate everybody?
Is that the same one?
I didn't get it.
I was thinking I just circulated it.
I don't know who went to, that's fantastic.
More second?
Yeah.
More, yeah.
Was it everybody? Oh, okay, I already did it.
It had that rather high number for an elementary school built in there?
Yes.
Was that just?
Actually, what, yeah. Yes. Again, those are just scenarios that one person built. And...
Is that sort of worst-case scenario?
What I actually want you to look at...
It was put in by one person as a draft. My understanding is Strategic Planning didn't see it, Select Board, School Committee, FinCom didn't see that.
So it's not the scenarios so much I want you to look at. It's the, it's, it's the thresholds that the other boards have given, and then sort of like seeing what fits in there. Scenario D, I think, is the one that's kind of, Scenario B and Scenario D are sort of the interesting ones, I think.
The thing to look at is, because it's a lot of information, do you see the little arrows?
Yes.
Numbers next to them? Those are how other, not identifiable, but other board members from Select Board and Finance Committee voted where their thresholds were.
Oh, okay.
So you can kind of see the lower and the upper, so you can, like, I think six people voted, that was the highest number of people who voted for one thing, and what falls under that. And so we can say we agree with those six, or we want to go up, down, whatever, but now we have a little idea of what that gets us.
Okay.
But also looking at our inputs as we've been asked to do, and make sure that we're comfortable with those numbers, and have good numbers, have, you know...
Yep.
Sorry, if you have any individual questions about that PDF, I'm happy to, like, one-on-one answer questions. We can't obviously deliberate on it until we put it on our agenda in two weeks, but I can help if you don't understand it.
This will, sorry, this will be on the agenda in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay. But you're wanting some feedback before then, like?
No.
No, okay.
Just questions, if you like don't understand how to read...
Okay.
...the document. I'm happy to answer questions.
To clarify, the threshold is for their modeling. It's not an actual threshold that would be put in place. So in your example of $400, should there be a year where the water treatment plant needed to be done and that meant a $600 increase? That still goes forward. The threshold we're giving is for the modeling, not a, not, not a limit on the actual tax increase year-over-year. That would depend on the specific year and what the need was.
Yes. I mean, and they're only going to be, Strategic Planning Committee is giving, is going to be giving recommendations, but it's going to be up to the individual, sort of at the tri-board level, to sort of manage year-to-year and sort of stick, manage projects within those recommendations. Yes. But if individual projects go above...
And why the...
It's not like, it's not prescriptive.
Yeah, I think that's the important piece. Why the change from the discussion on Monday night when it was, "We'll give you timing and specific school committee projects to, we'll give you one single dollar amount number?"
It's just sort of the way the conversation went, and when we started really talking about the report and feeling like the Strategic Planning Committee shouldn't necessarily say, of the 60 projects on the list, we think you should do these 10 or these eight. Because really our, really our charge as Strategic Planning Committee is to wrap our, wrap our arms around all the projects we think are sort of on the horizon for the next 10 to 15 years, and then sort of manage the expectations and tax burden on the public.
Did you discuss the recommendation to have FinCom look at and look at ways to smooth the year-over-year spend? So things like spreading out overrides, spreading out bonds to minimize one-year impact. Will Finance Committee do that before the report's finalized and published?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But those are, those are, things are certainly things we've discussed. But I think that would be more...
Because that changes the dollar amount, right? Because the point of like, if one year we have $200, the next year it's seven, and then the next year it's three, the whole point would be, it's just $300 every single year going forward. That's what we'd be looking, that's the suggestion.
Yeah, but that's, yeah. It's, it's a great idea, but it's really hard to put into practice. But, yeah, those, those conversations will, will continue. And there are, there are large projects that it's, it's going to be really hard to avoid a spike.
All right, we'll talk.
But we're certain, you know, I think we should certainly investigate ways with whomever, the school, town, finance director, town treasurer, ways to figure it out. Because I think, yeah, the goal is sort of avoid those spikes as much as we can, but some of the projects are really large, and...
All right. Thank you for that report. We will discuss on the 20th. Any other Subcommittees or liaisons? Hi. Now it's your turn.
So not much has changed in a week. I don't have anything that new to report. I will say that following your suggestion, I reached out to the middle school and elementary schools to meet with their own student government reports. Haven't heard back from the elementary schools, but I am meeting with the Ipswich Middle School Council next week, as well as the student group next week as well. We had the high school school council on Monday, and the main points from that was that vaping continues to be an issue in the high school, especially in the bathrooms and cross periods. It's continued to be a headache for the student body and for staff. Additionally, there would be like, there was a strong desire from parents and students to be able to have parent feedback on athletics. So in the past, high school parents have not given feedback directly to the athletic department from anonymous surveys. Every season, student athletes fill out a survey about how their coaching experience was, how their sports season was, and if there's anything to improve. But parents weren't, weren't inside that loop, out of the fear that some parents would be really agitated, you know, you didn't let my son get any playing time this season, yada, yada, yada. But because of recent events, a lot of parents have said that we would actually like to be part of a conversation and fill out these surveys and responses. And I believe that the Athletic Director and Mr. Mitchell will be meeting about that and having, that came around, there was also discussion of creating a new athletic Subcommittee or Committee for the athletic department at the high school, where there could be parents, coaches, and students to try to work out issues that develop in the athletic department. Because right now, when there is an issue with a coach, it can be difficult for students to know who to approach, especially because the principal doesn't really have direct authority over the coaches. And the Athletic Director doesn't have a lot of face-to-face roles with the students, and so that can be tough to approach as well. And if you have an issue with a particular coach, obviously you're not going to approach that coach. So the idea of this committee was to give students and parents a voice to do that. And so that was another big topic that came out on Friday tomorrow. The high school student advisory meeting, there's five of us, myself included, and Haley Riss, and we will be discussing various issues. Probably vaping will come up again. But yeah, that's all I have to report.
One's for Charlie.
Maybe a comment. This is the sixth month in a row that vaping at the high school has come up. I know Brian's not here this evening. I'd like to ask that we add to the agenda for the end of the month to hear what measures are being put in place to address it. We haven't heard anything about it, but we've heard the issue being raised.
I will say, I asked back in the fall if there was any more funding, and this is a bad time to bring up funding, for more vape detectors, because we have two in the bathrooms out of nine bathrooms. And those two are, these two bathrooms down here, which is not where most of the vaping occurs. Most of the students are not at those bathrooms at the time. Most of the students are in the pods. When they're moving between pods, between classes, that's when the vaping happens. And it's not necessarily a teacher's responsibility to do that, because they have classes to teach, and four minutes is enough time to prepare for your next class and go into bathrooms to prevent vaping. But at the same time, students aren't going to bathrooms because there's no restrooms to use, or because they feel intimidated by a group of nine or 10 kids all huddled up vaping in front of the restrooms. And that's not a good environment, especially for younger kids, freshmen and sophomores. You see a bunch of older classmates inside the bathroom vaping. It's not a good look.
Yeah, I think that would be excellent, because we talk about our, you know, our schools wanting to be safe and safe, safe places and a safe environment emotionally, but also, I mean, that is emotional, but also physical. If they're not comfortable to go to the bathroom, that's something that, and, and obviously, this is, we're not the only district that this is happening. So a question for Dr. Blake would be if he could reach out, probably has, to his fellow superintendents to find out what are they doing to try to combat this problem? This is...
Yeah. And also discuss, we also discussed at the school council Monday, what happens when a kid gets caught vaping. From my understanding, and we've talked about this before, when a student is caught vaping, they are first sent to PASS, a program in Beverly where the school pays money to. And they have sensation councils there, and it helps kids get off of addictions. But from what I've been told, from what I have overheard, PASS is not a very effective program. Kids like going to PASS, and that should not be the, it shouldn't be the main focus, but from what I've been told, they play video games, and it hasn't deterred anybody from vaping. And I know we have brought services we spent out of District Four back into the district, but I wonder if it might be wise to... but I wonder if it might be wise to, maybe next year, think about having a counselor we currently have certified in sensation counseling to help kids off of addictions, or hiring a sensation counselor. If, I mean, school committee, the school council estimated that half the student body vapes, or has vapes. We did that last month, and so that would be, like, 200 kids. And if we had a sensation counselor in-house, we wouldn't have to send kids off to PASS, where for them, it's not really a punishment, it's more of a reward. You get to skip school, you get to play video games and hang out with other kids who also have substance issues. It might be wise to bring that in-house, or to think of another way to teach kids alternatives to vaping and get them off of the addiction, because nicotine is incredibly addictive. One cartridge for a jewel is more nicotine than a pack of cigarettes. So we're talking about an incredibly addictive drug. And once they start with nicotine, it's a lot easier to move up with to electronic THC, electronic marijuana smoking. And so it's an issue. And so I think that the school committee should really focus and think how we can protect the students in the school and also prevent that from happening again.
I think, I know Mr. Mitchell included it in the most recent newsletter, because that came up at the last student advisory council meeting, like, that his, one of his communication goals was to try to, like, connect with parents more. But I think, to your point, what would be really helpful is, like, yeah, understanding what's happening within communication, within the student body, within the parents, within the student administration.
That's great. Well, that's great, but discussing it more next week will be...
I think the parent, the parent, the families are an important part of it, because if kids are vaping at school...
I would argue they're the most important part. Mr. Mitchell, the principal is, and the other administrative staff, is limited in what they can do to search a person. You can't expect the principal to walk into a bathroom. You can't expect teachers to walk in a bathroom. There's an expectation of privacy. At the same time, a principal can't, you know, search a student. That's also not okay. And so if the kids are vaping at school, if the addiction is that bad, they're certainly vaping at home. The problem is, it's very hard to catch kids vaping. It doesn't smell like a cigarette does, doesn't have the same scent. So it's a big issue, but it does, definitely starts at home.
And recently, DESI has, for probably all the right reasons, but they've also made it more about sort of treating it as addiction, less about punishment, right? There's a lot more rules around when students can be sent home for, you know, out-of-school suspension-type things, you know? And so I think we're in this sort of weird world right now, where I think the administration doesn't really know what tools they have available to them. I mean, in my district, we have the same problem, right? And the, and the solution has been to close bathrooms. So now you have kids wandering the school, trying to find open bathrooms. It's, it just, we have not solved it either. So it's, it's a statewide problem that...
And one of the boys' bathrooms is, has already been closed. So the boys only have two bathrooms for three pods in that direction, which would...
Four minute passing times.
Four minute passing times, which would make you think that it'd be easier to spot kids vaping in the bathroom if there's only two of them, but that has not been the case.
Problem. All right. Thank you for that. Tom, your finance report?
Thank you. And good evening. In your folders for tonight, I have the, are the monthly reports. You can start with the, are the general fund, a year-to-date, a monthly report. We have entered the ninth month of the year. There are only four months left in the, in the fiscal year. So we're, we're winding down there. The, the good, the good news, fiscal '25 is performing as expected. And we are in good stead to meet all of the, all of the goals that we have for, for expending funds and, as well as being able to make our, our contribution to the, to the stabilization So that's the monthly report for the month of February. The report to call to your attention, the monthly report of the, of the stabilization and gift accounts. Stabilization and gift accounts remain also in, in good stead. And we have, we have anticipated, you know, healthy balances across our major, our major accounts. So a couple of things to point out to your attention. We could talk about the revolving funds first, which is, which is the second half of the list. Down, at the very, near the bottom, the RL, the food, food service account, has, has an increase. We received our, our quarterly reimbursement from, from the free and reduced lunch program. So you see an, an increase in that, in that balance there. That's principally so. We have not, and I think I may have mentioned this last month, although I'm not sure, so it's, but it's worthy of, of consideration, considering our, our, our expect, our expected use in '26 of a circuit breaker, which is about halfway down. It's coded R, R11. We are continuing to show the, the same balance for the last three months, and that's because we haven't charged, you know, into that account yet. I think I may have mentioned that, but I think it's worthy of conversation as, as this, as this fund is going to be used in fiscal '26. It would not be, it's not really my, my plan or, or, or the method to charge into the account until the end of the, until the end of the fiscal year anyways. As we're, as we're closing, we would really only take the amount of money that we would need, which it may not be precisely as, as, you know, as driven by the budget. It wouldn't exceed that amount, but it likely would be less. So that's why the, the balance there remains the same for the last three months. Moving up the list, second to the top, school choice, R03. We received another, another payment from the state, which we get about every, every month. We receive some, some contribution from the state for reimbursement for school choice on students. So there's an increase in that balance from last month to this month. What I wanted to call to your, a particular attention, and we can, my intention would be to spend some time on it at an upcoming meeting, and that's the very first account under, really under the gift accounts, Q01 in FEFFIs. You'll see a precipitous drop in the balance there. And that's how we're accounting for, for FEFFIs and the grants this year, which is demonstrably different than had been done in the past. So we now have a full, a full, a very different accounting, a methodology for both the, for the, for the pain grants, for the, for all TWIG grants, and for the Manning Fund, which is very different than, than in the past. In the past, what the school department and the town would do would be to hold on to the balance until the end of the year, and then, then the treasurer would make a single transfer from, to, to, you know, effectively, at the end of the year, to pay all of the bills that were encumbered throughout, throughout the year. What is being done this year, and it, and it took us a couple of months to get, to get it all together, but we have now created a, I think it's a total of 53 funds between pain and TWIG, between pain and then TWIG Round One and TWIG Round Two. And each of those funds have been funded with the balance as, as approved by either the pain committee or the TWIG committee. So when, when, when the FEFFIs, the trustees, provide us a check at the end of June or the beginning of July, that would be deposited in the R01 FEFFIs account, as it had been in the past. But we're now accounting for it differently, because we now have a series of funds, particular to each grant. This may be a very long story, but I would like to show it to the, to the committee in, in more detail. But I didn't just want to pass this out and have everyone see a million-dollar drop in that line without bringing it up.
Where are you tracking those line items now?
We are tracking it through, through Immunis, through the, through the system, through the financial management's, you know, system.
So that's in the full year-to-date budget report?
Which is actually an improvement, I would say. I'm sorry?
So that's in the full budget report?
It is, it is not. It is, so the budget report that, that you, that you have here is just the appropriated budget. So, so none of the grants are, are tracked in the budget report that you have. I would like to begin to provide a monthly pain and TWIG report. I have not yet, you know, really frankly, I've been able to do that in the last couple of months, but it would be my goal to be able to, to do that, and perhaps either at the next meeting or maybe at, at the April meeting, you know, as we close the quarter, as we enter the third quarter, you know, of the year. I, I, I would argue that the methodology that we have now in place is, is, is a better tracking, tracking system than just having it in sort of one lump sum and, and paying the bill at the end. But it's certainly, it's certainly different. So I, but I wanted to particularly, you know, call that out, and I would ask that, that be maybe dedicated with some time attached with it at an upcoming meeting.
Sorry, what line is this on?
The very first line, Q01.
Q01.
So, Tom, each funded grant would get its own fund? For, say, in FY '25, there's, did you say 30?
I think there's 53, actually.
53, okay. So then, does that become a nightmare trying to close out? Because next year, you have another 53, right?
Yes. Presumably, yeah.
Is that a lot of work to close out all those grants? And then what if there's balances? Where, is that...
Well, is it a lot of work? Yes. I'm not particularly worried about the lot of work. I'm, I'm actually more, not to be odd, I'm more looking forward to the more work, because I think this will be a better accountability, a better, a better tracking, you know, you know, system. One of the things that I think that we've heard back from grant receivers, you know, the authors of the grant, teachers, and certainly the administrative assistants, who actually wind up having to do all the mechanics of that work at the, at the, at the school level. Because it had been held in one large account, it was difficult for anyone as a practitioner other than the business office to be able to, 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 to see that. And from time to time, well, fairly, fairly often, they would ask for balances, which is perfectly reasonable, but they should be able to have a clean, we should be able to provide a cleaner methodology to give the grant, you know, managers, you know, information that should be more readily accessible, you know, to them, uh, uh, number one. And number two, I think to your last, to your last question, Kate, about what happens with available balances at the end of the year, that remains, everything from a policy question, because I know there's an expectation that FEFFIs get some money back after a certain threshold has, has been met. And I, I'm not sure if that conversation is being had at the policy level, but if not, maybe that's something either to add, or maybe that's a next year, next year thing?
But the intent is to close out those individual funds when the grant is done and the money's spent.
Yes. And we, and we do that. We close the grant every June 30th, and, and, and if there's an available balance, meaning unspent money, which there often is, sometimes something comes in lower than expected, or they don't need 12 of something that they thought they were going to need, you know, 15 of, right? There's a, there's a lot of moving parts there that, that could leave an unspent balance. But as long as, you know, my take on it, as long as the expenditure remains with some fidelity to the purpose of the grant, you know, I, I think that there's some liberty that, that the, that the, that the principal and the grant, the managers should be able to have if, but it needs to obviously be germane to the purpose of, of the fund. So, anyway, I just wanted to point that out if you were, either have seen this already or were looking at it tonight or tomorrow, as you're enthusiastically pulling through, you know, budget reports. But I didn't just want to not, you know, mention that, because it was such a change.
I have another totally related comment, but on the string, same vein of thought. For the FEFFIs policy working group, is the chair of the pain or the TWIG going to be involved in the process for, when the policy comes to, like, grant distributions or anything? Because I think it might be valuable to have their insight, you know, because they watch over the committees and they're involved with that whole process.
In revising the policy?
In revising, not the whole policy, obviously, but the part that they're most directly involved in. I think it might be good to have members of the committees...
We haven't really gotten there yet, so I don't know if we'll discuss it.
I don't know if we've just been thinking about that.
Yeah, we'll discuss it at our next, because we, we are going to really start digging into the policy at our next meeting. I don't know. It's a good question. We'll think, we'll think about it. I mean, it's a school committee policy, so we don't have to involve them, but, yeah.
Right, but just to offer, like, insight into how they, because everyone, I'm sure they operate differently, and I don't know if we have a full understanding of how they exactly do that.
I think we need to provide, we, our goal, I think, one of our many goals in revising that policy, is to provide more clarity on the role of the, of those committees and...
But it's enough there was...
I don't think there's a lot of clarity around that.
If there was, like, an issue that we hadn't even thought of, that they might have insight on, or a solution they might have had.
Yeah, and I think bringing Laura into the discussion around, you know, that was invaluable in terms of how it actually functions versus how we think it functions.
All right, for derailing, but, yeah.
And, and, and the last report in your folder to bring your attention to is, is a similar report on, on revolving gift and stabilization counts. Sasha and the budget subcommittee had asked for a historical sort of lookback over, over how the fiscal year is closed for the revolving funds. As much as a good, good piece of information that is, it's also obviously, I think, providing some, some, some informative, a decision-making, moving, moving forward to what, what some of the historical performances have been. So, so also in your folder is that. I went back, I wound up going back to fiscal '28, excuse me, fiscal '18, sorry about that, fiscal '18. I had gone back a couple of years, and then, and then I landed squarely in, in COVID time and said, "This isn't probably the, probably the best sort of information." So I went back to a pre-COVID year, just to be able to, to get a sense of, of what that is. And, you know, COVID does have some, some ebbs and flows, you know, to it. But anyway, so in your, in your, in your report, it's, it's called an end-of-year historical seven snapshot. And a snapshot is an important word there. It's not a particularly, you know, technical word, but I think it's apt, because revolving funds, by the very nature of them, they, 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 they travel from year to year as, as allowed, you know, by law. So they, they close because we have to, we have to ascertain the expenditures from one year that's been charged into a revolving fund and then sort of start anew. But they don't close in the same way that the appropriated budget does, that we're allowed to retain those balances moving, moving forward. So it is a snapshot. These exist at one date. The day before, the balance could be different. The day after, the balance could be different, which is really unlike, you know, you know, unlike how the appropriated budget works when going from June 30th to July 1st, say. So, but I think that there's some good historical, you know, information here to see how things perform. And I think we're in pretty good, you know, stead with, especially the funds that we're, we're continuing to talk about. So there's a, there's a seven-year look and a seven-year average, and I just put on the, on the far-right column what the end of February balance was, just as a point in time. Here we are, a little past the midpoint of, of fiscal '25. So those would be the monthly reports.
For, I brought this up, I've brought this up many times before, the middle school, high school parking passes. Have you looked at those again? Just because the count has remained untouched for the past six years? Looks like it was last touched in 2018.
One of the things that we'll do going forward as we look, get out of this budget cycle, but to the future budget cycle, which is why I asked for the year-over-year, is to look at all of the accounts for that reason. They've essentially, as you can see, for the, almost all of them, have maintained that same level of funding. And so there's some, we're not doing it. Maybe it makes sense to deplete. Some, maybe we don't need to run at the same amount. We could do a one-time withdrawal, withdrawal and get it to a lower amount. Those are all conversations we'll have over the course of the spring, maybe into next fall. So the spirit of it, yes. We haven't talked about that specific line item, though.
Gotcha.
But to answer, to answer your question, my answer really hasn't changed, ever, which is, you know, it's consistent, so that's something. We have, we have stopped to, we have stopped a handful of years ago to collect fees, because there was a healthy balance, and there was really no need any, any longer to collect fees. But as with all of revolving funds that have been established as, under, under state law and town bylaw, the funds that were collected and, and remain, and the fund can only be used for things purposeful and germane to the reason why the funds were collected in the first place. So we cannot just drain that fund and, say, apply it to, you know, you know, you know, teacher salaries or something, or whatever, right? So things that may be germane as expenses to the high school, you know, parking, the middle school, high school parking pass fund would be, would... teacher salaries or something or whatever, right? So things that may be germane as expenses to the high school, you know, parking, middle school, high school parking pass fund would be, would, would be something like, you know, maintenance on the parking lots, paving, restriping, perhaps putting lighting, but it'd have to be germane to why the funds were collected in the first place, meaning for the improvements or maintenance of the parking lots.
Gotcha.
Oh, we, I agree with Sasha, we should be looking at, critically at all these funds as budgets get tight and are, is, are there any that aren't needed or could be closed? And I appreciate the 2018, 2019 because it is really interesting. Some of the funds we talk about every month, to look at the 2018, 19 numbers versus now is much more informative than sort of the wonky old years where we were, you know, just they weren't typical because we were getting a lot of federal funding and not spending on certain things and spending more on other things. So that is, that's helpful and I think will help our budget.
It's also, it's also, I think, you know, interesting to, to, to track the history in one place of, of the FEFFIs contributions, you know, the FEFFIs allocation, you know, each month. That here, one of the, I picked August thirty-first for a couple of reasons, mostly accounting reasons, you know, the budget year has closed, the auditors have been in, it's much more of a better snapshot than June thirtieth because of that reason. So that's why I picked eight thirty-one. But be that as it may, in terms of the FEFFIs, the FEFFIs, you know, balances would represent the money going into the new school year, not the money closing out of the prior school year. So that's the only, I don't think necessarily that it's a, a different telling of the story. That's, that's just something I wanted to make sure that we pointed out. So, you know, looking at fiscal...
Repeating?
Sure. It's showing, because, because the date that I chose for the purposes of this report was August thirty-one, meaning after the budget year, June thirtieth had been closed and, and sort of attested to by the auditors, so it's, it's a, it's a crisper number. In terms of the FEFFIs, that represents the contribution already received and ready to spend in the future, in the next school year. So and just look at the, the first one, the eight thirty-one, twenty eighteen would be the fiscal nineteen or fiscal nineteen school year. So that would be like the school year that would start September twenty eighteen through June of twenty nineteen.
Sorry, and is that applicable to all of these or is that specific?
That's specific to the FEFFIs because, because that, 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 because that, yeah, the, the rest of these would be representative of what's left. Because, uh, uh, the rest of these are really, you know, they generate a revenue throughout the, uh, the school year, so the, the end of year balance is more germane and it has been asserted by eight, by August thirty-one. But I want, you know, but the FEFFIs amount would be that the FEFFIs, you know, check, if you will, the, the allocation, the, they would come in over, in July, it would have been deposited. And it would, those balances would be available to fund at whatever activities were approved for PAIN and TWIG grants for the, for the school year that's immediately ahead of August thirty-one.
As you think about it.
Makes sense? That makes sense, huh?
FEFFIs and the grants, if you look at over the last six years, it's gone from eight hundred thousand to one point three million, so it's gone almost eighty percent. I think it supports what we're doing and looking differently in how we apply that funding. The dollar amount is getting so large that we really should be thinking differently than just the individual point grants that we're doing and be thinking more broadly and strategically, the same way we're doing everything with our budget. I feel like we're at a good time for that because of how large that number has gotten.
So those are the monthly reports for the month closing February.
Thank you.
Thank you. FY twenty-six budget discussion and potential approval. So Tom, do you want to walk us through what you just presented and then maybe Sasha, I don't know if you guys talked about who wants to say what or Sasha wanted to do that?
Yeah, maybe just to connect us from last week's meeting to, uh, there was an ask from Monday's subcommittee meeting to tonight. So when we met last time, we reviewed what you have in front of you, which was the February twenty-seventh. So this was, and some of the details are in the folder, how to account for the approximately eight hundred thousand dollar difference, both because of the healthcare and the lower revenue coming from the town. In our meeting last week, we reviewed this initially and the ask at the end of the meeting was for Brian and the admin team to identify an additional three hundred thousand or what would be the next five to six items that we could potentially reduce, a little bit less specifically for this year, but more to set us up long-term because we know we're heading into some rough years. We met Monday, we did not get the list of the five or six items or the three hundred thousand, what those additional cuts could look like. What we got to towards the end of the meeting was ways that we can give back additional money or continue to increase what's in the override fund, which doesn't directly benefit us next year, but helps us in the coming years. So over the, over a three-year stretch, same, same or similar effect. So the two things that we recommended and for us to discuss tonight were, one, in the fall, we get chapter seventy money from the state. That's above and beyond what we've been discussing. We get that every single fall. Last year it was two hundred and thirty-one thousand, year before that, I think, one twenty-four, one twenty-five. It, year before that was like four hundred and sixty, so it varies greatly. And then the other item was return an additional hundred thousand at the end of the year. So we would put it into the budget, should we need it for something unexpected, but with the expectation it would be returned. So at the end of the year, the budget, we would put back three to four hundred thousand dollars into the override fund, which would then be available for FY twenty-seven or FY twenty-eight. The net effect is similar, our budget doesn't come down in this year, but we have, we would have that money for future years, which would help us for next year's budget. That was sort of where we got to as a potential recommendation. So the ask was reductions, we came back with givebacks at the end of the year that we could provide. Let me just pause before we get into the details. One questions on that and then I'm gonna check with just Jen, Kate, anything else you would add. But any questions about that piece?
And can you walk us through what in the years past has happened with the chapter seventy money?
Sure. Me?
Two years, anyway.
Sure. So in the, in the prior, in the last of two years, meaning FY twenty-five, which would be this year and FY twenty-four, the amounts that, that Sasha mentioned, they have been, so they, those amounts to the two hundred and thirty-one thousand, you know, this year was appropriated to the school budget by, by town meeting. So the state aid comes in as, as the state closes its year. It's typically not known until August or, or, or September what a supplemental number may be, and it's a very unreliable number. Some years it's high, some years it's low, some years it's nonexistent, right? So the fall town meeting needs to, needs to award that money or decide something else. At the end of the day, town meeting can ultimately decide not to give it to the schools, I suppose. That isn't necessarily the, the, you know, the function here. So in the fall town meeting, its money gets appropriated to the Ipswich, you know, budget. The budget then grows by whatever amount of that, that supplemental funding was. And the school district is allowed through, obviously, work under your discretion, but our administration to be able to now expend a higher amount inclusive of that fund. If we were to look at, for example, the fiscal twenty-four, a year-to-date budget, if we wanted to go back in your folder on, on the, on the general fund, a year-to-date. What we had done as a result of town meeting, when, when town meeting had, had awarded the, the dollars to the, the school district budget, the two hundred and thirty-one thousand, we had, we had to come up with a place to distribute that. And if you go to page twenty-one of the year-to-date budget report, you'll see in the second column over called transfers and, and adjustments, we had applied that entire amount, two hundred and thirty-one dollars, eight oh nine, to the professional salary, uh, reserve line. So that's where the money came in. At the time, we did not have all the contracts, you know, settled yet, for example, so we were still sort of in that, in that space. And as we're closing, uh, uh, the year, we will be using some of that money to be, to be able to, you know, balance the budgets across, balance the lines rather, across all the, all the salary needs. Would also, so that would be a specific answer about twenty-five, about how the money came in and what we're intending to use it for administratively as we close out the year. In the, in the past, for example, for last year and closing out the year, it was part of the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we brought forward at town meeting to, to bring forward in, into stabilization. So I, I, I don't have a specific memory of closing fiscal twenty-three, I was here for a couple of months at that point, but I can certainly look it up to see what was, what was done in closing fiscal twenty-three. Twenty-four and twenty-five, I'm, I'm your guy.
Going back to stabilization, as has been done in the past.
So previously we said, at the end of next year, seven hundred and fifty thousand would go back into the override fund. Now, based off of this, it would be closer to one point one million.
Well, we don't know what chapter seventy is going to be.
That's, I'm using an estimated number, yeah.
Yeah. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, you felt, you liked the long runway of being able to work towards contributing more than we had planned back to the stabilization fund, because you sort of had the whole school year to do it and manage the budget and sort of try to work towards that instead of making a reduction now in the budget.
Yes.
Sort of work towards planning for save more instead.
Yeah, the, the, the three hundred thousand dollar ask, and, and we, we, we put a lot of, we put, we had, we put a lot of time within the course of a couple of days, to be honest, but we did put some, some thoughtful time into it. We had a couple administrative meetings and then, then Brian and I met a, a number of times. And we just felt that that was a very rushed timetable to deliver anything of, of substance, you know, to you. Didn't want to deliver anything that would, that would be dramatic, didn't want to deliver anything that would seem like, well, now you're just exaggerating. We wanted to, wanted to be thoughtful, that we need to be thoughtful, we needed to be. So we came up with a, with a different view of, of if the, you know, we sort of interpreted the school committee's thought that, you know, we were at an eight hundred, we were at seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand needing to adjust between February five and February twenty-seven, which, which we did. And if, if there's no real magic around the three hundred thousand, but add the three hundred thousand to the eight hundred thousand, that's where, and Sasha's coming up with the million one. Why don't we, I would much prefer as, as a thoughtful exercise in managing the budget to be able to use that time, meaning fiscal twenty-six, to be able to, to, to lower the budget in real time. Once the school year opens, we're going to know much more in September and October than we will now. We'll have people who may leave, people who may come, people who go out on leave, people who will go out on maternity, there'll be lots of things happening that we'll know about in September that we won't know now. And not to mention the fact that we'll have the, have the state aid by the fall. So that was sort of where our, where our landing square was as opposed to trying to deliver a, you know, sort of another set of, 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 of cuts that would actually be quite impactful to classrooms. I mean, I think the budget that's before you from February twenty-seven is as least impactful to teaching and learning as, as really, you know, you know, it could be. But I don't think going any further, we would, we would be touching, we would be impacting truly teaching and learning.
Kate or Jen, is there anything else you want to highlight from Monday's meeting that I didn't mention?
I was just going to point out to any, you know, anyone listening, it might seem counterintuitive that we're planning and putting so much into stabilization and making cuts, like why wouldn't you just spend that money and not make cuts? So I mean, we're trying to be really thoughtful to, to plan ahead and avoid overrides, which are quite burdensome to our taxpayers. So it's sort of bouncing between, you know, looking at next year's budget, but also sort of really trying to look long-term. And, and so I think the budget subcommittee is really, really trying to focus on the long-term minimizing override asks for the community while not trying to minimize impacting teaching and learning and keeping our budget as tight as we can. So it's, you know, it might seem counterintuitive to...
Can I ask too, just, I'm assuming that this is true, but I would like to spell it out, how much of that as well is not just focused on the overrides for education in schools, but again, back to the strategic planning and the bigger capital town, like all of the implications around all of that, just these things need to coincide, right?
Yep, yeah.
They do.
There'll be a lot of asks on our town in the next, you know, however many years. And so, you know, if we can sort of minimize the override ask, and, and some of those asks will be ours for, for school-related projects, so...
And not insignificant ones too. And I think, you know, just to hearken back to the presentation of last week, you know, that was some of the, some of the messaging that was, was delivered by the town manager when Brian and I met with him now a month ago or three, three weeks ago. And I think that's, that's reasonable for us to be very mindful of what is being asked of the town and what its, what its needs are, never mind what's being asked to support schools, especially the, the new elementary school, it's not a small-ticket item.
Kate, I think you made a very important point about it being confusing to a lot of people to hear that we will hopefully be putting money back, like you were saying. Sasha, you did, I think you said, in case we need it. So we have in case we need it, if we don't need it, we would put it back.
Well, so...
And just, I think it's important to explain, like, what does that, in case we need it?
Well, so chapter seventy money, and again, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that chapter seventy money, we can't take it in the fall and put it right in stabilization. We have to sort of like accept it, put it in our budget, and then in the spring, put it in stabilization. Like that's just logistically...
The town votes, the town votes at town meeting to put it in stabilization.
Right.
Right, but they can't vote that. It can't, it has to go from A to B to C, it can't go A to C. So, so it's, so it's in our budget.
Right. I, I just think it's important to, will be important to explain at town meeting, like, really break it down so people aren't confused, because I think they, they could be. Okay, seems like, you know, to a, a person who's just looking or listening quickly, okay, so, well, we have this much money, how come we're cutting that? How come we're cutting this? So I think that's going to be, because, you know, there may be a lot of speakers who, who say some things, so I think it's important to explain that, because it is counterintuitive, unless you really dig it and understand it, so.
Thing I might add if I can, so state aid comes in, you know, legislatively with the expectation that the community, any community, ours and the other three hundred and fifty towns in the state are going to use that for the purpose at which the state, you know, gives it to us, which is why, to Kate's point, it needs to come into the school district budget, and I think to Sasha's point, if we need it. That's why the state has state aid. State aid isn't to go in, it's not intended to go into a stabilization fund, it's intended to go for the purpose of, of supplementing and supporting the operation of schools. So I think that's an important piece that, that it doesn't just go in and, and sit there, it goes in to support the extraordinary needs or even the regular, frankly, not extraordinary, the regular needs of operating the schools. So I think that's important. The other thing that, I think this is not going to be very different at all, and I think that's an important point. I mean, we've had a, we've had a complicated story a bit in the last month, but what we're going into town meeting with, depending on your vote this evening and what the FinCom does in the next month, but what we are likely going into town meeting isn't going to be very different than the last number of years. So it's really not very different. I mean, we, I think all the strategic thinking that we need to do is going to be very different next year about planning for twenty-seven and twenty-eight. But what are asked to the town, regardless of, of the numbers or whatever you, you vote, we're going to ask for an appropriated number that is, that is in balance with the... we're going to ask for an appropriated number that is, that is in balance with the guidance from the town manager's office. We're going to ask for a, a drawdown from the stabilization fund that is consistent with the guidance from the finance committee last spring. That is the same number that you saw in February 5, it's the same number you saw in February 27. And we're, we're, we're anticipating to make a contribution to the stabilization fund as the school district has for years.
Right.
So it's, it's not, it's not a very different approach, even, even though we've had, you know, we've had some, some back and forth.
But I guess my, my question is, when it's, when, when it's said, if it's needed, and I, I think it's important to give some examples of like what would fall under that if-needed category, because some people could say, oh, well, world language is needed, you know, so what would, what would be considered if-needed? Like, we have it if-needed.
Well, ultimately, the, the seven of you can decide what is needed by, by statute. So if you decide that's a priority, or whatever it is, that, that's, that's your, that's your decision. From the school administration point of view, I would think some things that may, that may automatically hit the if-needed category is if we have an unforeseen, our facilities concern. One of our, one of our boilers go down, and we need to replace one of the boilers in, any, we, we're, in this capital plan here for the high school, we don't know where we're going to go with electrifying the building, or do we need an $840,000 boiler, which we do, to fund, to, that, its original equipment, 25-year-old equipment. So things like that would be what's needed from, from, certainly from my end of the aisle, obviously I'd take direction from the superintendent, but are ultimately your discretion.
There's, there's an aspect of, I mean, there's multiple things. There's an aspect of the mechanics of how to actually get that funds, those funds. So your example there, should we, if we didn't have, if we didn't have that available to Brian, Tom, and to the team, should there be something that happened to the roofs or mold that we needed at a significant expense? They can't just go into the override fund to withdraw the, let's say, 1, 2, $400,000 that they need. It needs to be voted on, so you need the mechanics of us bringing it to town meeting and all those things, and you can't just do that on the fly when a boiler breaks. And so the mechanics of making it available so they can use it immediately when needed is important, because we're hamstrung by the timing of town meetings. Like, that's a consideration as well, for some of those bigger items. Yeah.
Thank you. So I'd like to kind of summarize our budget subcommittee meeting from my point of view, and my words, I think, are much simplified. It's my, because maybe I feel like the most junior person on that subcommittee, but the things that, so, you know, last Thursday happened, Sasha suggested, can we see $300,000 more? Because I feel like we all have been a bit like, oh, my goodness, you know, this wasn't the budget that we thought we were looking at, and do we need to prepare for the future? I think if we had, similar to what Dr. Blake and Tom said, like, if we had six months prior knowledge of $700,000 more cuts, we would have done things much differently as a subcommittee and as they presented their budget. So in simple terms, what happened between our last school committee meeting and Sasha suggesting we look at $300,000 more is, we as a subcommittee gave some feedback as to, well, this is some framework on what to look at. And there was a short time period, and that wasn't presented in, in detail, but some of those things, I think, is what we would move forward with in the future for big-picture vision of how we deliver education in Ipswich, and those things being co-teaching, those things being class size, those things being an administrative model, and, you know, delivery of curriculum, who's doing it, how it's being done, and parameters. And I think that's what we were saying, well, if they're going to ask for $300,000 more, you know, what would you do with these things? And the, these are big, big discussions to have. And I feel like, as long as the budget subcommittee stays the same and, and how we look to the future, I think we're going to say to this committee, how are we going to deliver education in Ipswich by changing some of the ways it's delivered now? And those were, you know, not decisions that Dr. Blake and Tom thought could be made between Thursday and Monday. And imagine why.
Well said.
But I, there's things about this budget that I don't love, and I've expressed here, but I think going forward, we're going to have to make big, hard decisions about the way education is delivered in Ipswich. And those couldn't all be changed, but those are some of the topics that we, as a subcommittee, kind of bullet-pointed to Tom and, and Dr. Blake, and there was nothing specific that came out of that, but just know that, that those are things that I think we should start working on right away for next year's budget, so that we don't end up with, you know, a month's notice of, we need a million dollars less. It's, things need to change.
That was very well said.
I have to say, I.
You are the most junior member on that subcommittee, so it's okay. We all were at one point.
I like that approach, I really do. I mean, I was a little nervous, you know, about what 300,000 would look like functionally, never mind the short timeframe with which that would have to occur, right? And I think, kind of cropped up a little bit when we were talking with the LA, sort of, you know, about class sizes and what constitutes too big a class for Ipswich, you know, it's different for different districts. And I think we've been lucky here, and we, I think sometimes school committees and maybe even superintendents think that class sizes are the boogeyman, right? And I think class sizes are one of the biggest, although, albeit, most difficult to articulate contributors to a positive experience in the classroom. And if we can figure out where we think is that, that sweet spot that we would, is, is, you know, it's too much, we can't go above that, you can kind of build around that, you know? But if, if we kind of just running from year to year and sort of saying, all right, well this year, we got to cut, we got to cut these positions and class sizes will be 27, so be it, you know, I think that's, that's not the right approach. So I really like the way you guys have framed that. And I'm sure that probably reduced Tom's blood pressure a little bit, too.
I think we just want to be really thoughtful about those decisions, you know, whatever decisions we might end up making. And I don't, I think we would need input from people that are actually in, in the buildings. You know, I don't think it's something that seven of us or nine of us should be deciding.
Hundred percent.
I think we're going to need feedback and discussions and stuff. But one of the other things I was going to say is, you know, we also touched about school configuration. You know, we don't, it's, it's challenging in two schools to really work on class sizes, because in the elementary, you know, because there's three and three in most, and it's just, that gets really tricky. So, you know, there are some, some things we need to start thinking about, and maybe we should start thinking about, now that it's spring, summer retreat topics. Like, maybe there are some big sort of things that we could start to dig into in our summer retreat.
Or like a, I will start a running list.
May have to be a weekend retreat, the way we're going right now.
Well, I mean, one of those things. But it really comes down to what's, like, what's important to Ipswich, because we, we can't, we can't have it all. And there are, it's going to, like Sasha said, there's going to be some rough years, so we need to really think about what's important, what's most important to us, and what could we imagine.
Yeah, I actually think that, that even starts in the spring, so we can begin it. None of us have gone through that before, too, so I think part of it is to avoid us just throwing out ideas to see what, what sticks. Matt, you're probably actually closest to this, at least just because of your day job, but how do we get the right guidance and start to think about, what are the appropriate considerations going in that we should be thinking about? And what are potential trade-offs? I don't want us to, I don't want any of that to fall short, because we weren't creative enough in coming up with the ideas, and so some of it needs to be, how do we set ourselves up for success in that conversation as well? So I think that's something we should think about, too.
And we're all not going to agree, and sometimes, Dr. Blake, sorry, you're not here, but he's not going to agree, but these, it's going to be big, big decisions, I think, even just for next year, or year after next, to make some changes.
Overrides are the strategic plan, which includes other projects of ours, it's all looking big picture, which is super important. Questions or comments about the budget, the?
Maybe just summarize that our, our budget subcommittee recommends adoption of the budget as presented.
I have, I have a few, I have a few things we still haven't gone through.
No, 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 we can still talk about it, but I think, I think we, sort of, that's how we ended, was we want to, we recommend the budget as presented, but also acknowledge that we need to start having some, some bigger long-term strategy discussions regarding FY '27 and beyond, as a whole committee.
Like, procedurally, because the, your support, and I know we're just voting on the bottom line, but there is like the understanding that there will be that increased return to stabilization that will be out over the next year, like, that's, I just want to put that out there, that that is implied when we're voting, if, should we vote that way? Okay.
So I, I think that's, that's, that's an important point, just to, so baked into the budget, which is of dated February 27, does not include the additional $300,000. It includes the original expected drawdown of 750,000.
That's not reflected here.
From '27, for fiscal 20, excuse me, for, from fiscal '26. They, they, we haven't adjusted the calculator.
That's what I mean, that only, that's only in the calculator, that's not in the budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
But my point was, it's not, we're not, baked into this is not the, the requirement to, 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 to apply, you know, state aid, as it may or may not, you know, come in for that purpose. It is, it is, it, I think, Kate, you used the word, you know, runway, it was, that's what we're asking for. We're asking for a planning, we're asking for a thoughtful amount of time to be able to get us between the opening, well, between going into town meeting, the opening of the school and fiscal year in July, and fall town meeting. I think that's the amount of time that we will have some real, you know, time to, to plan. We're, we're going to know a lot more by October, November than we, than we do now.
Wait, I'm sorry, Tom, but the expectation tonight is that at the end of FY '26, 850 is returned, plus whatever the amount is from chapter 70?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's not anything we're voting on.
Right. And is it, so I guess I'm, just want clarification, is it, we're hoping to put 300 back, or just what's chapter 70? Because chapter 70, there's a range.
What chapter 70 is. So if chapter 7, if we had 500,000 from chapter 70, like we did two years ago, that's what would go into, into the stabilization of?
50,000.
That's what goes.
So that.
Yeah. That's right.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's, that's what we're aiming for. It's not, it's not a.
So in other words, in the fall, once we know what that number is, we can actually do a little bit better planning around what that would look like. Right now, it's just a.
That's right.
Whatever the state may drop on our head.
And it's, and it's not even a number that we could even do some abstract calculations around.
Because it vacillates so much.
It's, that, yeah, exactly. It's not a number that we have any influence over, you know, whatsoever. And we won't know it until August or September.
Which is why we don't bake it into the budget, because we don't know what it's going to be.
Want me to continue, or you have, you have remarks?
You want to, I mean, would it be helpful for people to recap the '27? I have a couple of specific items still for us to go through. What, what would be best for the, for the group?
Twenty-seven?
From the, the budget that was given to us on February 27.
Oh, the date. I was like, are we talking about? Whoa.
I'm just making up numbers, Haley. Stick with me.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. It would be helpful for me.
I'm going to do a re, yeah. Tom, do you want to do that and do a recap of what's here?
Sure. So what you have here is effectively the, the first or second page in your budget book. Obviously redesigned with the February 27 budget in mind. The February 27 budget presented last week is, is now the superintendent's recommended budget, so the February 5 budget is, is, is nonexistent, if you will, it's not part of the, it's part of the history, but it's not, it's not the budget that is before you. So the February 27 budget is now the one on the far right side in, in the green color. In the blue color in the center is the budget presented, the original budget presented on February 5. That shows the, a 4.29% increase over '25. The, the budget from February 27 with the $799,000 in reductions, net reductions, is a, is a 2.76% increase over fiscal year '25. We have obviously taken the, the budget reductions and adjustments and made them across each of the lines and each of the schools, and they are represented here before you in the 13 major, major programs that are on the far left, right? From the, from the four schools, through athletics, facilities, special education, ELL, curriculum, professional development, IT, fixed costs and benefits, health insurance, and central office and district administration. So those are the 13 major program areas that constitute our, our budget. The, the February 27 budget that's before you is a total of, of a $40 million, it's That's the 2.7% increase over fiscal '25. It is to be funded in two parts. Part one is the town contribution, using the town manager's figure of 39,226,869, which is a 2.9% increase over the town contribution from fiscal '25. And, and the balance being the draw, or the request to be drawn from school stabilization of 1,722,190. As, as I think I mentioned last week in presenting this, we wanted to hold some fidelity to, or at least some consistency to the requests out of stabilization, so we did not, we purposely worked around not changing the drawdown from stabilization. It could have been too easy to just say, well, let's just increase the, the withdrawal from stabilization and our, you know, $608,000 problem solved, right? That would not be responsible. We could have taken 800, excuse me, the 608,000 instead of supply it to school choice. We have a million five in school choice. That would not have, you know, that would not be a good way to do business, right? We do not want to apply reoccurring costs to one-time sources of funds. That's too easy a fix, and it's not, it's not good, it's not good, good management. So we, we retain the expectation of the request of 1.7 million from stabilization. We meet the town manager's recommended number for town contribution, and, and before you is a new, is a new budget that, that meets those needs and goals, at 40,949,059. I also put into your folder, just to have everything in, in one place, the slide deck from, from last week. It's also in last week's folder, but I put it in tonight's folder, too, just so you may not have to go back and forth and find everything in different places. So, so the slide deck is also in your folder from last week.
Yeah, I have a couple. I, I don't have the, we don't have the detail one, but one of the little ones we suggested was there are several line items in the school committee, school committee account. was there are several line items in the school committee, school committee account that should be removed. Just want to make sure that makes its way in.
We, we could certainly do that.
Yeah.
There were some things that, yeah.
No, some have to stay, but some of them can come out.
The, the total school committee budget, I think, is like $18,000.
That's 18,000, yeah.
I don't, that's the number that rings a bell.
Yep, that's right.
I can look it up quickly, but.
No, that's it, I have it in front of me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure in the future when that comes out, or there are areas where we could, we said we could reduce.
Yep.
The, for what we give to finance committee next week, I'd suggest, or, I suggest, I'd say let's take out any reference to the February 5th, that is history now.
Yep, that would be my intent, so I, I agree, thank you.
The percent increase that you're using is fall town meeting to spring town meeting. I'd like to use spring to spring so that it matches the revenue. So our increase, spring town meeting to spring town meeting, in that green box in the bottom right is not 2.76, but 3.36.
Okay.
So that's a point in time.
The town finance director will, will push back on me on that.
Could you explain that? I'm having trouble, for some reason, wrapping my head around the blue box versus the green box. Maybe it's because I'm.
I think I would suggest, ignore the blue box. That was what was presented to us on February 5th. That is in there as a comparison to say on February 5th, we saw this number.
Right.
The bottom one being a $41 million number as the budget.
Right.
The green box is what was presented last week, and again, tonight, is the 40 million, 900,000 number.
Right.
The blue's still there as a comparison, say, what did we see, what was the difference after they had to cut that about 800,000?
Yeah, yeah. But the 2.76 is, is compared to?
It's the $40 million number compared to fall town meeting. My suggestion is that $40 million here is in a, is a spring town meeting number. Compare it to last year's spring town meeting, which is the 39.6, not the 39.8 number. So that, this one right here.
2.76 is comparing this versus this.
Yeah.
And you want to compare this versus this.
That's right.
Got it. I don't, I don't know if I agree with you, but I understand it.
The full number includes chapter 70.
Yes, no, I got it.
Money that's added in, and so what I'm suggesting is this number here in green does not include chapter 70 money. Compare it to what we approved, compare what we approved in spring town meeting to spring town meeting.
Why would the town finance?
Because the, because the actual fiscal 25 budget.
Was the fall.
Is, includes the fall town meeting action. And the, the town records and the town accountant is going to have the fiscal 25 budget as a whole and say, this is what you're asking for for fiscal 26, at least as an opener. I appreciate your point, in fact, I made, I made the point earlier. What we can compare, what I am comparing spring to spring is the, is the town contribution.
Yes.
Right.
And I think that's.
Doesn't include other adjustments throughout the year, I guess that's my.
It does not.
Yeah. We're picking one random one, which is chapter 70, I shouldn't say random. We're picking one specific one, which is chapter 70, but ignoring other ones. That's what feels funny, so.
There's no other money that comes into the budget after the spring town meeting, other than chapter 70.
Yeah, that's the adjustment.
That's the only adjustment as terms of revenue that comes in after.
After, after, after fall town meeting, that's our budget for that school year that is underway.
Correct. So the, the comparison between spring town meeting and spring town meeting, which I insisted we do, is on the town contribution.
Yeah.
That, that is, that is, that is going to drive, that has driven the train.
Because that's what we're.
All the time, and that certainly will continue in the fall, even with our using of all the calculator.
I guess it's things like interest, revolving accounts, override grant funds that you're using for things. Those aren't considered.
Interest revolving funds aren't in the appropriated budget anyways.
Yeah. But they're contribute, right, but we have access to them as revenue, okay. That's right, it's not, not a sticking point, I just want, look for, be consistent.
But they, they aren't in the operating budget, I mean, they aren't in the appropriated budget.
Okay, that's okay.
I think we can discuss that further at the budget, because it, the, the fall to spring doesn't, won't, won't roll cleanly into the calculator. But that's okay, we just, as long as we understand the difference, because in the calculator, it's spring to spring.
Correct.
The new positions that were taken out, the dance and the health.
Health.
Were suggested to be put into funded by grant positions.
Yes.
I would suggest especially, we spend a lot of time talking about next year's budget is going to have to look wildly different, that there's a moratorium on new positions, that we not hire anything new, especially if we're going to go into here where we potentially have additional reductions. Rather than bringing them in for one year funded by a grant position, we've had issues with this in the past in other positions. I would say withdraw, I don't know where you are with the grants, other, withdraw the grants so that's not even put forward for the two additional positions.
I think, I think we should just focus on the, I don't know, that doesn't.
Well, because then you're talking about, that's, that's like a policy thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, that's, are we voting this budget through or not, question?
So Dr. Blake made the point last week that those two positions, for the purpose of the budget, are not in the budget.
Yeah, I'm concerned that it's.
Whether they get applied for as a grant, whether, the pain committee could, could deny them.
Yeah.
We may not even apply for them, so, but they're not in the budget.
No, I understand, I understand they're not in the budget. I'm saying we should be thinking further out than just immediate this year. And they're not in the budget, those people would be in the building, we need to be thinking more than just a single year. I think it's short sighted to include it. I would suggest not putting forth the grant for those new positions.
Just a reminder, and, and not to be argumentative, because I, I don't, that's outside of my wheelhouse. The recommendation that the administration put forward is that the pain committee, the grant is an application for, for two years.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a single year.
Yeah.
Because of that very point.
Yeah.
It would be unreasonable to think we're going to hire any, anyone of quality who's going to leave a position, existing position to come and only have, have them for a 10-month swing, so.
Yeah.
I think that the point that you're making, though, is, is a question that I have around process for like how we get to a decision around this, because while I recognize that those things are not included in this budget and the cuts to world language are included, if we're ultimately taking a vote on what's proposed here and those things fall under more of like a policy or grant, or like it's in another bucket essentially now, are we not able to drive that conversation forward anymore? Like in this meeting, I don't understand how that works, like from a process standpoint. I don't know if that's, either of you can speak to it, but like, so ultimately what we're saying is we're voting on this number tonight. Those things are not line items.
Yeah.
In this budget and in these numbers that we're voting on. But there's still things that we care about, like you have an opinion about how potentially that should move forward. We may all have different opinions about how those things are addressed. And you mentioned earlier, after public comments, when someone asked about it, that perhaps a grant was being considered for the world language position. That's not something that I have, I have heard. I am not aware of correcting the position. I think that there was a general conversation about what had perhaps ever asked that contained elements of world language. I don't want to.
Okay, all right.
Something, but there was like a general conversation, so. So, and I, I don't want to get down into the weeds with all of that. I think I'm trying to ask a sort of higher level process question around, those are things that we care about and that are values that matter. But how do we move forward with this conversation, but still have a placeholder for those things?
Yeah, so should we get there? Tonight, we're voting specifically on the 40.9 million dollar number. Hours, I think it's beyond the specific vote, we are talking about how do we want to spend funding for next year? For two positions, it's upwards of $100,000. That I'm concerned is, on positions, is at a risk for ones that we wouldn't be able to fund in future years. That's money that's a trade-off for, could, that could be spent on something else next year that falls into enrichment, should those go forward, you're jeopardizing spending that money on something else.
But the discussion tonight is about.
Is the FY26 budget.
Yeah.
And we can talk about that stuff at another time, but I think, I think those are two different conversations.
But yes, we are voting on this budget, but I think that this budget, a lot of the considerations for this budget, including like that $300,000 ask, like can we put ourselves in a better position for last year is kind of where you're thinking, Sasha, but I agree, I think we can have those conversations at a different time, perhaps, starting at your budget subcommittee.
The reason, the reason why I'm bringing it up is if anyone here expected, I'm okay with them being cut because at a later time we'll vote on them. I think we should be having those conversations at the same time, even though it's two different mechanisms. If anyone felt comfortable tonight that those were removed from the budget, so they felt, I, I absolutely feel we have to have a dance teacher, it's cut from this budget, so if we approve this tonight, there is no dance teacher. But there might be the expectation, oh, it's going through the grant, so we'll get it, so it's okay. I'm comfortable voting on this because there's a chance to get it later. We should in general agree, how do we proceed there? That's the difference, because.
That's not our decision about whether a grant gets submitted or approved, that's not a school committee decision.
Well, I think the policy that the FEFFIs are going to work out is confirming whether it is, because I know last year there was talk when the yellow strip wasn't funded, there were serious questions as to if the pain grants decision is the final decision or if the school committee, or if it's just a suggestion through the school committee. I know that was discussed last year, and I think the question Sasha's raising is that if we, as a, if you all, as a committee, vote to not have these positions inside the budget and they get funded through a pain grant, like what is the school committee's role in that? Is that what you're saying?
Trying to avoid separating those two things where we in general are agreeing on how we're proceeding. So we don't get to a point where someone voted on something with one expectation, we get to another vote down the line where now we're voting and everybody else assumed, no, we're not comfortable with dance teachers, but somebody did, and so there are two separate votes we need to take. I'm suggesting we should be thinking about this as overall, what are the positions in the buildings next year? And what is the overall spend on, and what is the overall spend for those types of things?
So I'd like to say, I mentioned this when I was speaking earlier, there's things about this budget I don't love, and I think I've been vocal at prior meetings regarding the budget that I think the, the position for a health teacher in the elementary schools was presented to us as, and the public, some of the public has weighed in to us about, well, you said that there was not a half an hour in the week for world language, but there was a half an hour in the week for these because they're standards. But when we were presented the standards, to me, those standards look like a lot of what the teachers are already doing. And does the position in its first year need to be a position? Or can it be something? No, something that the classroom teachers can include, because a lot of what the, when I read those standards, they're already happening. And then I also questioned at another meeting that we have had positions funded by FEFFIs grants for enhancement that are no longer with us. World language started off as an enhancement. Computer science in the middle school started off as an enhancement. I might be forgetting one, but those are two in, you know, recent past that are now no longer with us for one reason or another. And what I find disappointing about this and the health teacher position is it's going to be brought as a pain grant as a standard. And I philosophically disagree with putting a standard position forth as a pain grant. And I hope the pain grant committee agrees with me. So that, so for the purposes of speaking to the public and listening to the public, because we've gotten a lot of feedback about how enriching world language was in the elementary schools, I do think and hope that the principals are writing a grant for some type of world language enhancement that might not look like what it looked like in the beginning. That would be an acceptable enhancement pain grant. I, and it, it's hard to sit here and, and explain to the public, like we have to vote on one line, one number, and put forth a budget or accept this budget as our own. But I can be disappointed that there's certain things not in it, and some of those things I don't believe are pain grants. And I think we're, we've become this cycle of depending on pain grants to get certain positions. I do think the dance position is an enhancement, an alternative that makes sense in the pain grant. But I don't believe the health teacher is, and I'm disappointed that that wasn't just absorbed into a classroom teacher position. So like I said, there's things about this budget that disappoint me, and those are the major ones. And with that understanding, I, I understand that we have to vote on a number and a bottom line and not individual pieces, but I think it is a discussion for us to have about, well, there's things that maybe, maybe you wanted something different, or you wanted, wanted something different that's not in here, and I think we should have that discussion, too, and I think we owe it to the public who has emailed us and showed up here and said, world language really has enhanced my family and my child, and it's not in there. And they're disappointed, and I'm disappointed, too.
And I think. I think it's a great point, the one other thing I'll add is it, it's akin to the way we're using revolving accounts. We're choosing to use revolving accounts to fund some of these things. It's in a very similar way to say we're, it's intentional decision to say we're going to choose to use the, the grants to fund positions, right? And it's the same way we would communicate to use the revolving accounts. And I think that's why it's part of a bigger, like the broader conversation.
And grants is rolling the dice.
Yeah.
Right. And Sasha, I think your point is, correct me if I'm wrong, that we need to be, even though we're not, we wish we could have everything, but we need to be under this, understanding that we may not get those positions, so we need to be supportive of what is here, assuming this is all we get. We can't say, oh, well, like you were saying, let's just plan on the, the pain grant doing that. Let's assume those don't happen. That's what, let's go into it. Unfortunately, that's just what we're doing. So it's here, if it's in here, we know we have it, if it's not, if we get it, great. But we're assuming that it's, we have to assume that, that, that's, that's what I think you're saying.
Right. All set.
Okay. I have a couple of like, just like nitpicky budget questions that I just didn't ask the other night. Have your book. One is high school, page 66.
Page what?
66.
66, yeah.
High school budget section, line descriptions. So in all of the departments, it says steps and lanes in parentheses. But it's my understanding that steps and lanes are not included in the line item budgets.
Steps, you are correct, steps.
That is incorrect.
That is incorrect, yeah.
Because the steps and lanes are in the salary reserve.
Correct, it would, it would be, it would be my intention to move them into the budget, so that's where they are carried and, and seen, but they are not in, they are not in the line items, they are held in the salary reserve.
Okay, and you're not moving those into the line items for the FinCom presentation?
I am not, no, no.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure I was like, understanding that. And then the second one was something we got an email about, that I don't remember if you, maybe I just didn't get a response. In the Winthrop highlights page, page 36. Related to the world language program, we got an email about it.
The goals, the goals page?
Do you see that, Diana? What you're talking about, yeah. Was that addressed, was that email addressed? Is that, is that an incorrect statement in objective two? Sorry, I'm.
Oh.
Yeah, no.
I didn't, yeah.
Implement a new world language program in Spanish in order to develop students global.
If that's an error, it should be removed, that's all I, and that's not a Tom question, that's a Diana question. Because that is confusing. And, wrong, I, I think, I just want to make sure.
That may be, I don't want to step outside my lane, but that may have been a fiscal 25 goal.
Correct. I just want to.
Of the transition of when the mandarin teacher left in the middle of the year.
So if some, if you could look into that, Diana, and what's, I don't know, is, what's your timeline for reprinting Things Gone?
No, 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 not yet, that's still-
That's just a pretty glaring error.
I haven't even, I haven't even touched these cover pages yet. I've been doing the detail-
I don't care if the steps and lanes stays there, because no one's gonna catch that, but that, that error is-
Yes. Excellent, excellent point.
I think it's just a carryover. Because even before anything happened with that position, it was, it wouldn't have been any position.
So that's, so it's, thank you. That was it.
That's why I was guessing it was a twenty-five goal that was just carried forward.
Um, I think I, just to reiterate what Jen said, I would like to take a moment to articulate my frustration as well around the cut to the world language program, given that that's feedback we've been given from the community. I've already articulated that here, but I think what's important about it to me to understand moving forward is, to your point here, like, that was a twenty-twenty-five goal for the school. And so we can check the box and say, great, like, this twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, we executed on that goal. But in terms of how that goal is going to be addressed moving forward is something that I think we need to understand. And not just for this particular goal, but again, back to the broader conversation around how are standards addressed? And how do we, or, you know, as a committee, really understand how those things are being addressed in an intentional way? Where goals, the outset of a goal, the execution of a goal, and over a longer term period are being addressed, I guess. And so I don't fully understand how that shook out here. I guess to some degree, the history of how it came in as a pain grant, and how that's created some confusion. I think again, to Sasha's point about highlighting how we can address that from a policy standpoint moving forward is going to be really critical. But those are all sort of TBD things, which again, I think we understand that our charge is going to be, um, challenge, but it doesn't help for the decision tonight and for the budget next year, and that's what I'm feeling frustrated about. I feel like our hands are tied, and it is what it is, but it feels really dissatisfying to me to see that as an outcome for something that I think matters to our community and matters nationally and globally. So I'm frustrated about that outcome.
Um, what's the total amount for the elementary positions across the two elementary schools?
The world language position?
Yeah, I don't see it across.
Well, thirty-six times two.
Yeah.
Is there split point five and point five?
I think for the, if you want the line items, twenty-three, oh, five, six, four, three. Hearing and agreeing a lot with a lot of what's being said in terms of action items, as we continue to talk about world language and the FEFFIs policy. Also, I think it might be helpful to have Tracy come to a future meeting and go over what does standards mean? While we're voting on that bottom line, we, I'm like, this is a values document, like, we wanna feel like the number is representing what we wanna see. And I think a lot of us are feeling like, we're in a place where that might not be the case, but we also don't have a lot of options in that bigger picture of looking at all the things that are going on for our town.
I mean, I don't think any of us are, take, take any reductions lightly. I mean, it's, it's not decisions that we wanna make. So I think it's.
Okay.
Take a break. Be a good time.
Aren't we almost, it's up to you guys.
You mind if we take a break?
No, I don't mind.
No break?
No, I'm not, I'm not deciding.
Okay.
Let's do it. We'll take five.
Take five.
I walk around then. Got the gum in there.
I was gonna say. Just got one. Or you just wanted to walk.
Well, I'll still take my walk, but-
I'm sorry.
Walk and chew gum. I'll take what you got.
What are you eating?
Thank you.
Diana, the, um, the spreadsheet appointments, are you, can you take ownership of that?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I just got a request from Sasha asking for access. I, I shouldn't receive it anymore, right?
You're still the owner.
Can she be the owner? Oh. How'd I do that? Oh.
Well, you can let him.
Well, I don't know if she wants to. Okay. Gotcha, 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 gotcha. All right, um, I bet I can pick, let me try, let me try. Okay, I can. Yeah.
I'm here for a short time, you know, I can't.
I just did it, I just searched it.
Make the best of it.
Yeah.
Can I open it up from my email?
Nope, I've got it.
Oh.
I hear they're gonna be selling EBSCO and turning that into something.
Which one?
All of them, except for On the River, the one that's on the river.
Yeah.
They're gonna sell all the other buildings, so parking garage, the hall, the big one where the River Walk is.
Oh, thank you. So you should be the owner now. I mean, you are the owner.
I guess there's, they have a new CEO.
Oh.
Should I do like their turn to work for a while? It's like not working.
One more thing.
I think they talked to, um, same people who are buying the other EBSCO property for the housing.
We have a quorum.
Turn that into housing.
Oh, but we can't. We're voting on a budget, so.
You have some real shops, the hair salons and banks and that, it'd be nice.
More pizza places.
Spice it up. Oh, yeah, that's what we really need, yeah. More bars. We only have like twenty.
Yeah, we're private clubs.
Yeah, yeah, we need more of those. We only have an Anvets, a VFW, you know.
It took me a while, it was like thirty-five to actually finally visit everything. It was one of those life goals.
One of those life goals. Your favorite?
Yeah. What am I doing? To go find Sasha.
Where are them?
Got my offer from Fordham, did I tell you about that? It's like the same price as US. So it's pretty good. Get back next week from six. It's a big week, get back from six. Back from all my schools about my birthday, which is pretty cool. Well, you don't wanna decide. The twenty-four, so I have a lot to.
All right, we're back at nine oh seven. Questions or comments about the budget?
Um, yeah, I, sorry, earlier I think what I was trying to understand is, is there a process for us essentially to go back to budget and add the world language back in? Is that a concrete action that we can do for calculating that seventy-two, two oh eight?
Is there any room in the revolving accounts for that, Tom, or is it kinda too late to add something back into the budget?
So, it's my understanding you could propose adding seventy-two thousand dollars to the bottom line, but that does not promise any position would be hired. Because like, again, we're not voting on line items or specific things, we're voting on a, on a, so-
But we're not potentially hiring somebody, it's a position that's already currently-
Again, it's a number, it's not a position. We're not voting on positions.
You know, there are other positions that ultimately-
Number and providing a direction or direction that the school committee would like to see it spent on.
That is not binding.
We'd be providing direction.
And that goes against what the budget subcommittee decided to agree in with Florida at our meeting.
And agree or disagree what the administrative team-
Right, because this was not pitched solely as a budgetary problem. It was pitched as a budgetary problem as well as a time on learning, you know, school day problem, which, you know, I'm not familiar enough at the elementary level to know how big a crunch that is. I'd take them at their word that that's, that is in fact a crunch. So I think even if you solve the budgetary problem necessarily, if in fact it is a time on learning problem, you know, that's not something that necessarily they may act on, so.
They're experiencing that now, I think would be, they would, it would maintain what it is currently, the twenty-five minutes a week trimester for fourth grade. So it would be limited, but at least it would maintain it.
Right, with the addition of a health curriculum, unless we wanted to be outside of, and I don't think that, compliance on that, which-
I don't think that's anywhere.
Needs to be absorbed, if it doesn't get absorbed.
Yeah, it needs to be absorbed.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's, there was additional pressures on that, on that school day, that, that was at least what I, my takeaway from that. It wasn't just solely a budgetary problem, is that they're just increasingly experiencing a crunch problem.
Yeah. I mean, given that what we've heard from the town, and the amount, and some of the changes we've made, I would be supportive of that.
Ask how last week you wanted to be two hundred. Take away, and now you're suggesting increasing.
Especially with our concerns about long-term budgeting and then returning money to the stabilization fund.
Yeah, part of what we also discussed was, and Brian's reason for feeling uncomfortable with three hundred was, instead of incremental steps, to make significant change broadly and do that in a future year. And so if that's the approach you're gonna take, instead of incrementally winding down, it gives us the space to just, you know, to, to add that back in for this year.
It would be like a banner year.
Next year or following year, yeah.
That would have us put less money back into stabilization and potentially impact the year that the next override would be.
Not, not enough that it would impact, not enough that we wouldn't be able to maintain the, the stabilization funds through FY twenty-eight. It wouldn't, it wouldn't change that.
Well, we haven't reviewed that as a budget subcommittee, so you say that, but like, that hasn't been vetted or discussed. This is just like, it's just, that's your opinion. We just haven't discussed that as a budget subcommittee.
Right, but it's-
It doesn't have to go through-
That's been in the override calculator since the fall. That's not new information.
Okay.
And at the same time, I feel, I don't know if it has to go through the budget subcommittee, if public comments for this global language position have been happening at, you know, full meetings for three times, four times, people have come up and spoke, and it seems to be the only- Right, I, I understand that. I just think the idea of raising, bringing the position back into the budget could certainly happen here. I don't think a vote or anything should happen before the budget subcommittee looks at anything, but I think Kaylee's- Okay. You're not talking about, I thought you were talking about the elementary world language program.
Yes, but as it relates to-
Right, and I, but I don't think it's wrong to raise the question at a full meeting. I think, I think the school committee maybe should advise the budget subcommittee or make a recommendation to look at what that would look like, featured back in, but I don't think it should, you know.
How do people feel about the addition of it, of the, what is it, not seventy-two?
So Tom did the follow-up with the benefits, ninety-three thousand.
Yeah, I'm just curious where, where people are.
Let me clarify that, that amount, because I'm confused. So if it were to stay as is, because right now we have one person shared between two elementary schools, so the budget lines for each school is thirty-seven, six oh four, thirty-nine?
Well, the, the budget, the book that you have from, which is the February five book, the position I was not in.
Right, so I can see where it was eliminated, but there is an amount.
But, right, so the, the, the cost for the position in fiscal twenty-six is not necessary- is not necessarily represented, represented in the book. But the cost for the position, the salary is, um, is, it's thirty-seven thousand, five forty-eight for each school for a total of salary of, of seventy-five thousand and ninety-six dollars.
Hold on one second, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want, this is where I don't understand. Is that as it was in its entirety? Because, like we've said, it's been a very watered-down position that one person shares among.
For both schools.
Both schools, so is that person making seventy-five thousand?
Yes. Between, between the two school budgets. If you were to look, you can see in fiscal twenty-five, if you're looking the, in the, well, in, in either, in either, you know, elementary school. I have.
Oh, I see, yep, the twenty, twenty-four, actually.
World Language in, I have, I have the Winthrop budget open, World Language on page forty-four.
Yep, so I see the seventy-three, one three six.
Right. Because in fiscal twenty-four, it was, it was a full-time position. At, at that point, it was sixty-nine thousand dollars, so obviously there's been raises and column and lane changes and those things. So the cost of the position for fiscal twenty-six next year is seventy-five thousand, ninety-six dollars. Plus, we need to add to that the cost of employment and the benefits, workers' compensation and things that would have been taken off in addition to the salary.
One position.
Yeah, so that, so the, the position, the cost of that position in its, in, in full for fiscal twenty-six is, is ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
I feel like we're throwing a wrench into something that, I, I, I read the ruben because I feel the exact same way, that we're not in love with what we have here. Right, in a perfect world, and, and this is coming from a teacher who does not like cuts. I mean, I've experienced it personally, it's, it's ugly. But I was, I would, you know, I think that the budget we have here has done the best with what we have. And, and putting this money back in to an administrative team that has told us that it doesn't fit right now, both budgetarily, but also within their program of studies, they not obligated, I don't think, to use that money towards this, am I correct? So are we not just introducing something they have told us that that's not something they feel like they can continue with? By us allocating this money and throwing this whole process into a mess for them to simply not, in fact, use it for it? I'm having a little trouble with that.
Matt, are you making a motion?
Well, I didn't want to, I don't want to cut, you know, debate here, but at the same time, I, I just, I want to make sure that this feels like muddying waters, even though we don't like what we have here. I don't feel like we're, this is a feel-good thing. I don't feel like this is actually working towards what we would love to have, which is the reinstatement of this, of this program. We've heard from, my, my kids love it too. But I'd like to hear from you guys. I mean, if you think I'm wrong, have at it, but they're not.
I feel like it leaves room for the bigger conversation around being more intentional, around what the values are and how these things are addressed, as opposed to having that feeling of blindsidedness around it. And maybe the administrators don't feel that way and other people don't feel that way, but I think we've had enough communication from the community. And as a school committee member, like it doesn't look like that was something that historically has been raised as a concern. How do we fit that into the bigger conversation around how all of these things are other standards and the other things that are coming down the pike?
Yeah, and that's a meritorious debate. I mean, I think that needs to happen a hundred percent. But I just don't know if this is, this is the moment, the venue for that to happen, because we are, we are allocating something for which we have no control over. We are throwing a wrench back into a system that is, you know, again, I, I don't like some of the things that are here, but I, I think this is the best that could and probably have been done under circumstances that we have seen or inexperienced. But if, if the rest of this committee disagrees with me, I will, I mean, again, I hear you, a hundred percent, but.
I, I agree with you, Matt. I'm concerned about adding this back in, not because I don't support world language and I do, I mean, my kids didn't get exposure to this program and I, you know, wish they did. I'm concerned it's not in the superintendent's budget, it's not supported by the administrators, I'm not sure adding it in back, you know, into, into the current superintendent's budget is a promise that it will actually happen. I'm encouraged by the discussion that we had, that you brought up, Jen, last week, two weeks ago, I don't know, about finding other ways in the school day to incorporate world language and cultural exposure. I think I could imagine they could easily find more than twenty minutes a week to incorporate that sort of thing into the, into the school day without a position, you know, through music, through art, through language, through lots, through lots of different things. And I, I feel, I felt like from what we heard from the administrators, there was that, that commitment to really do that, so. I don't, I don't like cutting this program, but I also, I respect the superintendent's budget, I respect what the joint principal said about the program and the concerns they have around scheduling. And I have a lot of concerns about the future budgets before us, and, and I think, you know, it's, you know, I lost the total number, but ninety-three thousand plus dollars added back into the budget when, you know, that's, that's not an insignificant number, and I don't see this position as being something that is a sustainable position, given our current financial situation. Though I would love to continue the conversations, and I think we should keep on the administrators and how, how are you working this into your day, and, and let's be creative, whether it's through grants or through, you know, incorporating this into the day through, through other programming. But given our current financial situation in FY twenty-six and beyond, this does not seem like a sustainable position, so I agree with you, Matt.
Would need to be offset by the, the time of day, or the time during the day for students, isn't that offset by health, which is not included, right? That was the trade-off that was
I don't know, I don't think they know the schedule.
I think that would.
Health will have to be come back in in some form for them to be in compliance. So that time needs to be added in at some point unless they are comfortable being out of compliance.
That, what I was going to go is that, you know, that's the trade-off here that we heard, and, you know, this would set the direction of.
And this is why I don't love when Desi does these things, you know, where the kid takes away some local autonomy to have meaningful experiences, but.
But do, we understand enough about how the, like, what the parameters around compliance are in terms of, you know, who's, I mean, this is a brand-new standard that they just rolled out. Is, I mean, are districts expected that the next year those standards are to be addressed? Or is there a period of time in which there's best practice? I.
Dr. Blake question, I don't know if that's above my pay grade, but.
Yeah, I don't honestly know the answer to that particular question, but I, I think it's important to note that this conversation would be, would be being had outside of even, you know, a budget conversation. This was not, you know, driven or, or recommended because of the, of the budget reductions. This was, this was something that made its way into the, into the original budget proposal because of the time constraints, because of the the needs of, of, of programming not being addressed in the, within the school day. And the twenty minutes a week was, was a tough sell. But, again, it, it's, you know, these are the type of things that, that I think are driven around, around this table. I, I can say from, from participating in conversations and observing conversations that the two elementary principals and Dr. Blake have heard the feedback that you've provided at a couple of meetings now, and they are coming up with brainstorming, they're beginning to brainstorm ideas, a way to, to have world language have, you know, appear and continue to be part of, of, of the, of the school week next year, outside of having a teacher dedicated to that work. Whether that may or may not appear as a pain grant or a twig grant, or even just a, a complimentary work to existing instruction. But that is not, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, but that is not a part of the, of the budget. This wasn't part of the February five budget, and it certainly didn't work its way back in the February twenty-seven budget. But it wasn't driven as a budget problem in the first place.
We don't hear a lot from the community, I just, for me, given the amount that we've heard, I feel like it's, it at least warranted this conversation.
A hundred, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, like, and I think that the the, the part of, you know, heavy lies the head that wears the crown kind of thing here is that we all kind of are in agreement with that, like, we like this program, and I think so then to Kate's point, it is incumbent upon us to continue to put pressure to ensure that these things that they say matter to them are being incorporated in the classroom in some ways, right? I mean, the cultural awareness is, is, the language was, was the avenue into the cultural awareness. Can they accomplish what they say they can do without the language component to it? I'd be interested to hear from them on that, but.
Well, and I think that's the, that's the efficacy piece, right? Because you can say a standard is being met through the literacy program. So the literacy program is culturally diverse, and it meets those standards. But to what level and to what quality, right? So is it doing it in the same way that songs and explicit language being taught? And that is a much bigger conversation, but I think that that's the piece that we should understand, right? On a granular level, to some degree. I mean, if we're ultimately making a vote on a document that we keep saying is a value document, that we need to understand what the driving factors of those values are on a granular level. So, while I recognize that the vote is a dollar amount, and ultimately it's up to the administrators to do what they want, and because they are making those assessments on a day-to-day, and I think, Kate, you have articulated this well many times, and, and it's important is, we have to trust that they're doing that, but it's also our job to make sure everyone's accountable and for us to understand that. And so this, for me, there's, feels like there's some reciprocity.
I also think, you know, world language could be a part of this conversation, these bigger sort of like strategic, what's important to us, who, who are, who, you know, what's important to such education? You know, how do we feel about co-teaching and class sizes and whatever, and, you know, world language could be part of that, like, you know, I think all of this, all of these things are part of that, you know? Who are we and what do we, what do we want to work towards? You know, maintaining or working into, or keeping in our district and, you know, and those will be tough conversations, because as I said before, we can't have it all, but, you know, what, whatever sort of will rise to the top will be, you know, things that will be, become part of this sort of long-term district for vision for dis, what's it, strategy for district improvement or something? You know, and those things will become important to us, and they'll work their way into the education plans, and, and I don't know what those things will be, but I think world language should be part of it. And it was, and it was a long time ago, and that's, I think, why, when my kids were very little, language started, I think you got a half a year in seventh grade, and then you got one language in eighth grade, and then high school. And there's nothing in the elementary school, there's nothing in the majority of middle school. So we have worked, you know, we've worked up to a, you know, to a K-12 language program, a K-12 language program, and unfortunately, we're trying, we're having to backtrack a little bit, you know, because of scheduling concerns and budgetary concerns, but, you know, if that becomes a priority, then we need to figure out a way to get, get that back. But something else may need to give, but that.
So I worry that letting it go, it's going to be so much harder to work it back in, and I think, given what I said earlier about what we need to do is make very big decisions about educational philosophy and how it's delivered in the next couple of years, that I, I would be willing to add it back in because it's, even though it's, seems like a large, large dollar amount, it's a very small amount compared to what we're going to change and cut and reduce. And two out of my three children didn't experience elementary school language, but my third did. And I can tell you right now that there's a huge difference in what was going on in my third child's language development compared to the first two that didn't have it. And it's a very big deal, even to have the twenty-five minutes a week. It's obviously made a huge difference in some of the families that have contacted us. So I'd be willing to add it back in because I'm afraid it's going to take years to get it back.
Again, with the caveat, though, that adding it back in is, is very far away from actually adding it back, right?
Adding the funds.
We don't, we can't tell them what to, what to add in, and if, if administrative team has articulated that this is not where they need to be right now, then us adding the money in might not necessarily add the program, in fact, probably won't.
Would we know? Would we know how to adjust the budget to even have a dollar amount to vote on tonight, or would we not vote and get more feedback?
It would be the addition of.
I, I support the budget as.
If we were to increase the budget, of the two options that are, or of the two, you know, means, funding sources that are before us, the town contribution seems pretty solid. As in, I don't, I don't think there's, you know, real, you know, real viability in thinking we're going to get more or ninety-three thousand dollars more from, from the town contribution. You, you have at your discretion to seek a, a higher withdrawal from the school, a stabilization fund. You could direct us to find the money through, through offsets, through existing revolving funds. The only real, uh, uh, revolving fund that might be adjemine would be the use of school choice, meaning that's a, a bit of a catch-all, meaning there's not a lot of, a lot of tightly, you know, scripted requirements for the types of things that we can charge to that. But that's, you know, you know, sort of doubling down on increasing our reliance on school choice, which we certainly, I'm recommending, we, we back off from increasing our reliance on, but.
You could draw that from school choice at a later point without us voting on it this evening, so.
We can. We could cer, yeah.
You could, in theory, we could vote for the number as presented here. What was the question, I think, Matt, what you bring up is particularly important, right? We're doing this without any of the admin team in the room. Should they say, yes, we're able to find that space? You could fund it through school choice.
We couldn't.
If that was something the school committee supported.
That, that is a, that is a lawful option, yes.
And I think we need to have more discussions about that. I do appreciate, I mean, I appreciate the conversation, and I think it's good. It's good to think about it and be creative.
I think that this is what has to hap, for me, as it is, is what has to happen this year. But we as a committee can make a, a noted effort to continue the conversation with the, the principals and the administration to figure out how to get that back. I know, Jen, you were saying, and I understand that, that once it's out, it's hard to bring things back in, but I think if we keep it on our, high on our radar, and it is something that's important to us, and we continue the conversation, because right now, as, as we've talked about, sadly, we're all sad about this, and the administration would love to have it too, but they're, they're boots on the ground, if you will, you know, and, and, and they see it, what it is from the, from the inside of the school, timing, all that, in their own budgets. So getting them to use that funds this coming year, I don't think is going to happen, to, to go the way that we would like it to. But I think with further conversation throughout the next year, we might, we have a better chance of talking it out and figuring out how how we can help them put it back in their budget, or however we can do that, but I think if it, if it stays high on our priority, then, and, and we don't lose sight of it, I think we have a better chance of perhaps putting it in the following year. But I think this year, I don't think, I don't think it's going to be grabbed up for that position, but I think a year of conversation, keeping it on our radar, is, is what we should do.
What I'm hearing is... I hear all the concerns. I am also supportive of the... Seems that there is conversation that can continue about the position. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to support the FY '26 budget proposal presented to the school committee on 2/27, 25, in the amount of $40 million, 900, sorry, $40 million, 949,000, sorry. Start over. $40 million, 949,059.
So glad I didn't do that.
Second.
Could I interrupt for one?
Yes.
There is a recommended motion. Could include in your, in your, in your motion and on the consent agenda?
I didn't see that one.
I just wanted to see you do that.
Wanted to see you flounder.
Just kidding, don't.
Because there are three components that, that, that come out of the, of the need to present to the town, so I'm...
Where is that?
It's on the consent agenda. It's the, the motion sheet, so to speak.
I think under someone else's one.
You, you got this.
You need exclusive approval for the special ed stabilization?
We do.
Move that the school committee approve the superintendent's budget proposal for FY '26 as presented on February 27, 2025, for a total budget of $40 million, 949,059, including the withdrawal of $1 million, 722,190 from the education stabilization fund and a supplemental request to access $100,000 from the special education stabilization fund as needed for extraordinary special education service costs.
Second.
Okay, moved by Kate, second by Matt. So it doesn't matter that a motion and a second had already happened before? We can just continue with the second motion?
I guess you would have to withdraw your original motion.
I think you just amended it.
I interrupted, you're spot on.
I think anyone said, yeah.
So...
You can withdraw your previous move.
I withdraw my initial motion.
Okay. Thank you. So if initial was withdrawn, the one that you just read is on the table. Moved by Kate, second by Matt. Thank you for clarifying, Haley. Further discussion? Being none, all in favor? Opposed? Six to one, so the motion passes. Thank you all for a robust discussion. Business. Consent agenda. Move the EFSIC school committee to approve the following. Meeting minutes from February 12, 2025. Meeting minutes from February 27, 2025. A donation from Barbara Newman of a full-size cello and two cello bows with a total value of $15,260 to be used by the music, music department. And a donation of an elliptical machine from Rebecca Henry with an estimated value of $1,000 to be used by PE classes and athletics in the aerobics room at the middle high school.
So moved?
Second. By Kate, second by Jen. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Our motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Jenny, second by Kate. All in favor. Jen, all in favor. Great, adjourned.